All right, we have, we have a guest here today. One of the issues that is in committee now was the resolution approving the agreement to operate and manage the Utica Zoo. I'd like to bring up the director and the deputy director of facilities, Andrea Heath and Gary Munson. Come right up here. Hello?
Maybe give us a little briefing on what's going on and the reason you're here for it.
Okay.
Okay, sure. Thank you for having us here again. I'm Andrea and Gary. The zoo turns 110 years old this year, so it's a big year. Another way that it's a very big year for us is we are up for our AZA accreditation. It's a five-year accreditation which we were able to gain in 2018. Big deal for us. And they gave us an extra year because of COVID, so we're in our sixth year, but we're up for accreditation. One of the questions posed to me right before the meeting is, will we definitely achieve accreditation? Accreditation with Association of Zoos and Aquariums is not required to be a permitted zoo and aquarium. Our zoo is permitted by USDA. That's the permit that we need to have. But we really strive for the AZA accreditation because that's the, like, the seal of approval. It's the best practices. Of the 220, of the 2,800 animal care facilities around the country, there are only 247 that are accredited, and we're one of them. So the answer to the question, will we automatically gain our accreditation this year that we're striving for? No. Nobody can say that they'll automatically gain it. The application is pretty intense. We're, we've been working on that for about a year. We're really confident in our application. But the physical inspection is everything from... That's right, thank you. The physical inspection is everything from basements to ceilings and yards and animal care, governance, finances, physical plan, you name it, diets. So we're, we're looking forward to the inspection, but we have a lot of work to do. So that was a question posed to me. The agreement here, the last time that the Utica Zoo and the city of Utica had a signed agreement was in 1999. I came to the zoo in 2011. Gary came in 1981. So we've, Gary's been there a lot longer, but shortly into my tenure, I realized that we didn't really have a current signed agreement. So in 2013, the city of Utica updated the agreement with a letter to us that said, you're permitted to make repairs, revisions, additions as you need to. But about three years ago, I want to say it was in the fall of 2021, a number of our board members and a number of department heads here at the city, Charlie Brown was in attendance as well, we got together and started to flush out a new written agreement. And what you have before you is a few versions in. We did a lot of homework about the actual acreage. We talked about things like if, if we were to do a project that was above a threshold of, I think it's $50,000, we let the committee, we let the city of Utica know. One of the things that we're really happy about in the agreement, and it's been occurring for about a year, is that the city would assign someone on a regular basis who would attend one of our monthly meetings. The meeting that Dave Shore actually attends is our facilities committee. And Dave and I have talked about it, we all have, that his eyes have really become open to the complexities of running a zoo. So that's been a really great addition. We feel like it's a nice liaison between the city and the zoo. We were very, very thorough in what we report out at that committee every month, and Dave gets to hear it, and there's minutes. I guess what's most important to us is that we answer any questions that you have.
I think, I don't think, no, I can't speak for everybody, but I think the biggest issue that we had is we wish what you're doing right now, you came and did before, they brought her right in front of us that night and made it, made, you know, and we just wanted us to go. It seemed like in the past, everything was just thrown right at us. And I think by you coming here, and if you did that the first time, and I'm not saying it was your fault or anything, but I think if, if you did that and things were explained to us a little bit different, I think, I think, I don't think it would have been in committee. I think it would have been passed. It's just my thought.
Thank you. I'd love to speak with any of you anytime that you'd ever want to know something. So thank you for that.
All done, yeah? Okay. Briefly, can you touch on to the fact of why a 15-year agreement is important to the zoo? Because I think that that was kind of, again, that explained to us that last time around, and I'm sure you can explain the importance of, of having that, that extensive of time in a contract.
Well, the last agreement was 1999.
Right, but what is the significance of having it for 15 years? I mean, is that for grants, contracts, for, for your component of it?
I think originally the contract said 20, actually had 25 years, and I think it was just, you know, an input number. It doesn't have to do with grants. I think we did start talking about this contract in 2021. So I, for myself personally, I was hoping that there'd be enough years that we didn't have to keep going back to the table over and over again, just for, you know, efficiencies. It took quite a bit of time to, for us to get to the versions and get everything flushed out for tonight. I will say that at our meeting and the board, we weren't sure what the significance of 15 years or 25 or five or one was, because the question the board was, what happens after that time? Does the zoo go away? Does the city want the property back and not be a zoo any longer? But it was explained to me, no, that's just a renewal, you know, a time to make changes, revisit, et cetera. So I, I don't think we have an attachment to 15. I think that we just want to be efficient. Time goes by really, really fast. I feel like, I feel like we actually just sat down for the first time in 2021. It seems like it was yesterday. So I'm not sure how much would really change. We don't ask for any funding in this, in this resolution. We get some plowing, et cetera. Primarily, it's mostly a description of how we're going to collaborate together. And I think that maybe it would even be great to put a clause in there that says that there's an open door policy to, as things change, that we maybe have new ways that we collaborate.
And I think Charlie, you were going to discuss a little on why...
Sure, can I finish? Yeah, no, I get that. Sure. I just want to say that I think I've been a, you know, been going to the zoo since I was young. I've been a member of, of the Utica Zoo with my family and my kids. We go there quite frequently.
Thank you.
And I think that you guys have done a fantastic job over the years, and we enjoy, we enjoy going there. My kids are 10 and eight, and they're getting older, and I'm like, we go there on field trips and stuff like that. So, I mean, they're, they're getting to experience a lot of it, and it's, it's been, it's been broadened a lot over the past several years, so.
It's unique for a city our size to have a zoo. I, I do often say that. And when your kids get a little old and say they're too old to go to the zoo, there'll be a little timeframe when they say that. But then you can bounce back and say it's a great place for a date. That's what we've been saying, sure.
Or it could be junior doses.
Right, right.
When they get 16 and actually work with some of the animals.
Right, right. Yeah, no, we do. We've, we've enjoyed it. We've enjoyed it, and that's obviously one of the highlights, I think, that the city has. And it had nothing to do holding up the contract of anything that you guys did. It was kind of from our end, trying to figure some things out. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, you have a question?
I think the last time we were here, when, the old council was there, there was a move to change terms. And I said at the time that I didn't think that that was our job to do, because we didn't draw the contract. We are not going to have to draw the contract. I think Mr. Brown probably drew the contract, and we could make suggestions, because this is a resolution. And Mr. Brown's been here, I think, on three occasions on this very same contract. And I think that the deference to him, and the reason I've said very little, is he's the architect of the contract. He knows more about it than anyone. And of course, we've both been here since the very beginning. We were here in '99, and we're here now. And I would like for Mr. Brown to have the opportunity to say whatever he wishes to say about this now, because of his many appearances. Thank you.
What's that?
I said, how many decades does it matter?
Come on up, Jerry. On a duration... On a duration, I'm going to mic him. On a duration, the society originally asked for 25 years. And as was explained to me, it's because they need term for long-term planning. They're planning 10, 15, 25 years out. And a lot of their things, they're, they're making capital improvements, which then become the property to the city once they're completed, and that they felt they needed some continuity, some assurance that if they're going to invest into, say, a new exhibit, that they're actually going to be able to use that for a period of time. So that was basically the reason for the, for the 15, 25, from 25 to 15. And you feel that's a difference? Again, I think everyone, so you understand, when, when you, when a contract comes to you guys, it's the product of, in this case, years of negotiation, usually months, and there's a whole lot of give and take and this and that. And what you end up with is something that nobody got everything that they wanted. Each party generally had to give up something that they would have rather not given up. But it all together, it's like a piece of cloth. It's like a fabric, you know, a piece of cloth. It's all interwoven into, it's hard to point this to the other. When you start pulling at threads on that cloth, the thing comes unraveled, which is why I'd say it's tough to take, pick something out and say, I don't like this. Go back and renegotiate it, because you may end up with something completely different. So, okay, we'll do that, but we want something over here, because we gave up something. We wanted 25. Settle for 15. So we did, because we were getting something over here. So, I mean, that's, it's hard to pick something out. You know, once, once a contract comes to you people, unfortunately, it's pretty much an interrelated thing, but it's hard to pick at a particular provision and try to change it. Charlie, you have a question?
Yeah. Just one thing, not a question. Just, I just want to explain on my part how I felt.
Yeah.
So the way it came in here, 50 years to me, didn't mean anything at all. We had a former councilperson that went on and went on about how bad the zoo was, and she wanted to make it, I don't know what she said, three years. And I think everybody just said, we just got it that night, put it in committee. If it's that bad, why would we give it to them at any year? Is the point, which there must have been a problem between that person and whatnot. But like I said, you guys are here. You do a great job. Proud to be, you know, have you in our city, and I got no, no problem with this. I'll be holding your sentence.
Say, do you have one question?
I'm sorry for wasting your time the last time you came here, because, I mean, really, that was the first time that we got it.
Well, I was going to say the same thing that Councilman Beatrice said. There was a lot of pushback from one of the council members, former council members, about the performance up at the zoo and some of the things that were happening. The only thing I knew about was the lion thing that she brought up when the person got bit. But she made it sound like, you know, there was different things that were happening. And that's why I'm glad you're here tonight to, you know, say something. Could you say a little something about that? How are you guys doing?
Sure, I'd be happy to. And one of the kudos that we did receive after the incident with the lion, the African lion, on October 17th, was how transparent we were. We got right out in front of it. We made a release to the media. We, you know, we told every bit of truth about it without giving away some personnel pieces. But the reality is, it was a human error. We had a keeper who didn't follow protocol, although she knew immediately when protocol wasn't followed. She was courageous and right on top of it, and she did everything she needed to, to rectify her error before it could have been a really, really big tragedy. I mean, quite frankly, she could have been killed. If that lion wanted to kill her, that lion would have killed her. But she, I'll just give you a couple of details, because I hope you'll be as impressed as I am. I'm, I'm not an animal care expert. She looked that lion in the eyes. She said that lion's name. She backed away from the lion. She distracted the lion with a bucket. And, and when she got to the gate that she exited, she had been injured, not horribly, kind of like a large, kind of like a house cat would bat you when you walk by. It wasn't as bad as it could have been, but she was injured, and she had her wits about her to secure the locks to the gate before she exited so that that lion couldn't follow her out of the gate. Because if the lion had followed her out of the gate that she exited, I mean, the lion would have been loose in the zoo, and it would have been even worse. So I still get chills, you know, kind of describing the incident to you. So how did she know how to do this? This is where I'm going to answer your question of how we're doing. We drill these types of emergencies. We, we have several codes, in fact. Sergeant Mauer here from the city of Utica Police Department has been engaged with us this whole, past several months, reviewing our drills. He came up and did a tabletop drill with us. Then he came up and did the actual physical drill with us. We're going to be doing a code lockdown for active shooter with the city of Utica Police, because it's required in our AZA application. And they're kind of excited because they're going to be able to do an open-air drill. They haven't been able to do that yet. We're going to do it without visitors on grounds. So we have, part of my answer of how we're doing is, we have really strong collaboration with, you know, team members in the city. I mentioned Dave Shortcombs. You know, people are just, hi, I was just talking about UPD. I wish that you could have heard all the good stuff I was just saying.
All good stuff?
Yeah, all good stuff. Sergeant Mauer. But we have, you know, great collaboration with, you know, fire and... But we have, you know, great collaboration with, you know, fire and, and police and the city government and just partners. We have the most keepers that we've ever had. So we're working really hard to make sure that people have the tools that they need and the time they need, professional development. We are always going to need more funding. We're a small zoo and we want to do things the correct way, so we'll always need more funding. But when I first came on board in 2011, the board, it's all one hundred percent not-for-profit. The Board of Directors passed a $785,000 a year annual operating budget. You cannot operate a twenty-four hour, seven day a week entity that takes care of domestic and exotic animals on that type of budget. We're now somewhere between two and a half and three and a half million dollars annually. So we've quadrupled our budget and we did that through, you know, additional admissions and fundraisers and donors and gift shop sales and, you know, different kinds of earned revenue. We have a strong Board of Directors. We're currently undergoing a strategic planning process with a company, a nationwide company that does this for zoos, big zoos and small zoos all over the country. How else are we doing okay?
Well, we're, we're doing okay because we have a great community support. This area embraces the Utica Zoo. It supports the Utica Zoo, the City of Utica, the community as a whole, individuals, corporations. And I'm proud to, to, to look at a lot of these organizations and the support they've given us over the year and how they brace us and embrace us in the community. And I think one of the largest strengths in this whole area is our community and the community support. Yes, we have a lot of nonprofits, but this community's got the heart to support those nonprofits, which makes us a special area. So I, I, I say I'm just very proud of the community and the government agencies as a whole.
Andrea, I mean.
I think the zoo's fantastic. My daughter comes in for lobbying with her friends and their kids. It's, it's great for our city to have a zoo.
Thank you. We are Albany Zoo, by the way. They don't have, it's interesting to know that the state's Capitol doesn't have a zoo. And we get a lot of zip codes coming to Utica.
They come in at least twice a year.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
And they love it.
Thank you.
Thank you. First, thanks again for, for coming in. So you mentioned the society being a not-for-profit. Just from my own knowledge, do we know how long ago the society was established as a not-for-profit in the state?
I want to say nineteen sixty-eight.
Sixty-six, sixty-eight.
Sixty-six, yeah, sixty-six.
Thank you. Thanks again.
The only thing is, so we've, I've done tours of like the Anita Herkimer Celebise Authority, the Mutson Williams. And now that I think about it, I mean, I don't think I've ever done a tour of the, of the insides of the zoo. I didn't know if that would be something that you would be interested in doing. I mean, I know the zoo by like the back of my hand. I just, you know, I've never seen the function of the, of the inside. So if it's something that we could do, I think that that would be.
We'd love to have you as a group or individually. I mean, we give tours all the time. I would love to give a tour to any of your.
And I could just email you to schedule it? Is that okay? Okay, all right, cool. All right, definitely do something in the near future.
I, I'm serious. I don't know if the regulations require you to have your common council meetings right here. But, you know, on a nice summer night, if you'd like to have a common council meeting at the zoo, that'd be fantastic.
We gotta get a majority vote, but if we do, I'll definitely see if we can move it there.
Sure.
July or August.
Yeah.
Bobby, well, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Do we sign our names on this sheet? Okay, thank you.
So any questions? We can move on.
Yeah.
The next thing I want to look at is the ordinance removing the traffic island on Eastwood, they have it on the road. I know, I'm just wondering.
We've got one more.
Quick question on this. I think you're on a, I think you're on a study, a traffic study there at this time. I mean, what is this ninety days, what's going on?
The ninety days is for temporary signage because they already put up the stop signs without it actually being legislated for. So without having to remove those traffic signs or actually legislate for it, we asked that the administration put on a ninety-day trial run so that we wouldn't have to make anything permanent. And then once that ninety-day trial comes, then we were going to make the determination of whether or not we wanted to move or remove the island.
Any, any feedback on that?
We made some recommendations for no parking signs. I don't know if that's part of the.
Well, I think that's coming down. And I, I don't think, is that, is that?
It's already in there.
Okay.
Yeah, because they legislated.
Intersection where stops required yield signs, no parking signs, I guess. All right. So others coming down on a, I talked to the mayor on it today. He said, the, the bottom line, he says, I know Mark Garibault and, 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 I also need to, that's your location. The mayor was saying maybe it's nice to put the heads together to see what you're really going to do there. I mean, what type of engineer is studying?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just pose a few questions to either the UPD, the administration, the judge, corporation, council. Do we have a, a number on what the cost was to construct the island in the first place? Do we have that final number? And if so, what is it?
I believe that we do, engineering would likely have the numbers, would have the numbers.
I did request, we all requested that, like the exact number. I think it was upwards of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, but also requesting, I don't know. But also requesting how much it would be to remove it, too.
Okay, and, and that was my next question. Do we have an estimate on what it would be for outright removal?
The thing is, this, this was done without legislation. It's because we're trying to make a monument now. You got one individual and it's on that map in there that it's pertaining to him the most. So when you reduce someone's value of their house, because now you have this thing in front of their driveway, you got a stop sign in the corner of his driveway and you got yield signs. He can't park in front of his house anymore. And if Olmstead wanted to put this in there when they first built Ridgewood up there, he would have put it in there. But it wasn't part of the original plan. So when a councilperson comes in and starts changing plans of Olmstead, right? Because, without going through the common council, because now she, she wanted to put a monument there that says Olmstead, whatever on it, you can't do that without permission of the common council. She did it behind the backs. And then, when they're building it, before you even dumped the cement, I put a stop order on it. Even Councilman Miola backed me up on it. And he said, and the mayor still, just still poured. So if anything comes out of this, it's going to come back on Celeste and the prior mayor because they did something illegally without going through the common council and you affect one house. One house right there on the corner. So if I put an island in front of your house, when you bought the house originally, and all of a sudden he's got an island there now, he can't park in front of his house, he's got a stop sign at the end of his driveway now. So he's got to worry about hitting that thing at night. And the thing is big. It was never supposed to have been there in the first place. He did it without permission, no authorization. The judge will say that. The judge will back me up on that.
And the one thing that I want to add to that is when Jeff Donahue, his house that did affect, he actually brought up one point to me in Rocco. You can attest to this. You live in that, you live in that neighborhood. You have an island now with sidewalks, okay? Do you want your kids crossing the road on a, on a regular basis, going to that island in the middle of, in the middle of the street? I mean, because that, that to me is kind of worrisome. You don't have any, you don't have any crossways. You don't have any walkways. You know, anything like that. And I know that your kids, huh?
They've got sidewalks?
They've got sidewalks right in the middle of the, of the island now. So my question is, when you've got kids in that neighborhood that now say, hey, I want to go across the road without, you know, going there. I mean, I didn't think about that from that view and that standpoint until Jeff actually brought that up. And the first thing that came to mind was the kids in your neighborhood. I know they all play there. So now what happens if you've got somebody driving through that neighborhood and you've got no crossway, no walkway, and these kids just go and they go and play around on that island in the middle of the, in the middle of the road? I mean, so that, that to me, right there, on top of the fact that Jeff, if he has somebody now stopped at that stop sign, he came and backed out of his driveway, he has a work truck, which he takes the National Grid truck home, that he has a difficult time trying to park now, trying to back it out of that, of that, especially with the snow now, which is even more difficult. To me, I would vote to eliminate it right now for the simple fact that you now have a safety hazard with kids without a walkway in the middle of the road trying to go to, to play in that middle of the island. I mean, that, that to me, if I had an island across the street from my school, I guarantee that my kids would try and run across the street to go play in that middle of the island. And that, that to me is horrible, especially without crosswalks, especially without any safety, safety signals. For, because that technically would be a monument, which would be a destination place for people to go and look. And that, that is a, a big no-no to me. And if I, I wouldn't want to be the one responsible for that.
Let me stop for a minute a second and I'll, I'll come around. Everybody's had something to say. And then, but I, I don't mind the freewheeling. It's all right. But let's go around and then. Go ahead.
Yeah, when it was introduced and councilwoman Tessa did ask for certain information for the council, I don't think I've seen it yet. So.
Because they didn't foil it, that's.
I don't know, but some of the information that we needed.
And what was that?
All right.
Can, can the, Mike? Can we find out what was, what was spoiled and maybe get it to them?
Yeah, I mean, I'll see if there's anything.
There was anything and anything related?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll check on that.
All right, thank you. Frank?
Well, I went by it just to see it today. I didn't see it in the summertime. Right now, it just looks like a big, huge snowbank and it's a hindrance to traffic. There's no question about it. I don't know how a school bus could actually fit through there. I mean, I just took a quick, I didn't see it in the summertime, but I saw it yesterday. It's nothing but one big snowbank in the middle of the road.
Yeah, so, you know, I will say this is, is right down the street from my house as well. I mean, Dunham actually turns into, into my street. So we walk by it all the time. You know, I think the big issue here, obviously, there was no notice. The residents didn't know what was happening. I spoke with a lot of those residents who live along the streets there. You know, I contacted the school board to see if they've received any complaints from faculty or staff at Jones School to see that perspective of things as well. So I think, you know, from, from my point of view at least, I want to continue to talk to as many residents there as possible. I've contacted a lot more. I'm waiting to hear back from. Also waiting, again, you know, school buses were mentioned, so waiting to hear back on the school board's perspective. Now, as it currently stands, I agree, you know, there's not even the reflectors on the borders of where the street starts and the traffic island starts there. And, you know, I think that could be a big problem with the snow. Someone who's unfamiliar with that area, driving through, doesn't see it or doesn't see reflectors because they're not there. So I think, you know, at this point, for being in the third ward, being right down the street here, I want to, again, continue to talk to as, as many residents as possible and get their feedback on, on what their day-to-day experiences are with that right there.
I had an opportunity a month ago to take my truck and ride around the island. And my truck's a little bigger than your average car and I had to back, back up to go around, back up to go around. And I didn't think that was safe. And, and if it's not going to be safe for the children, you know, that should be one of our priorities as well. So just, I haven't seen what it costs to put it there. I haven't seen what it costs to take it down. But, but let's do the right thing and make sure it's safe. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of the sentiments. I think if we're talking about safety, I just would like to get confirmation from either the traffic study or whatever to look and make sure that we are just actually making decisions based on what is happening. We, we say safety a lot of times and it's kind of utilized as a, it just sets a, I don't want to use that term as, and create this precedence when we just use it to make it either, to either remove the traffic island and just as a evidence for that, when it might not actually be the case. This traffic island was put in with CNS engineering did two different models to show to people of what we should do. And I guess engineering picked one and it was this model. So on the other side of this, too, we did request from Austin at the end of the last year's meeting to get the exact cost of everything, which I'm still, will, will want. And then to, definitely we need to get the cost of how much it is to remove it. Because my other thought here is, I know people do want it gone and, but if there's another way to compromise of depending on the cost of it, maybe reducing it would be cheaper and smarter and still not a hindrance to the community. But looking forward to hearing more from maybe the next meeting. Thank you.
Before the meeting tonight, I went to speak to our, one of our newest members and I want to address this to Mr. Carcon. I don't have to address this to Samantha because Samantha knows more of the rules sometimes than I do. But in any event, I want to make it clear because you're new council people and you should understand a little bit of the history. This common council has a lot of powers under the charter. And streets and, and traffic patterns and all of them are really within your bailiwick, not the executive. There are studies that allow the executive to do things for ninety days. We all know about that. The police department knows about it. And we've worked on that for years. The problem that happened, well, two things I want to point out. I want you to understand that you only have power when you're sitting in those chairs. Once you leave those chairs, you have absolutely no power. In other words, you can't tell any city employee to do anything because they don't work for you, number one. And you have no power of them. All your power lies right here when you're here. Now, to explain a lot of things that happened in the last year or so, there was so much money floating around and people were doing things without this body. We didn't even know about them. And I think the Edgewood thing is a perfect example. There were meetings being held about that project. And there was a councilperson involved and they're making designs and everything that, in my estimation, always belonged to this body. We control the traffic, the line of traffic, our monuments, things of that nature. And I could say, for my benefit, and I think for almost everybody here who was here, we didn't know anything about that. One day we woke up and there was this design there in the middle of nowhere where a big turnaround was located and people's homes were, who parked there? And I have to say that the private, previous members of the council tried to stop it, but, but the, the thing was already there. The day I went to look at it, it was there. Only thing left was that concrete pouring, which was an attempt to stop that. And we were, I think, Councilman Williamson called me and I made the attempt. I made the inquiry. The person made the inquiry. We were promised it was not going to happen and it happened about an hour later. Am I correct, Councilman Williamson? We did that. Yeah, but it was too late to do anything court-wise or anything else. But in any event, right now, you have a structure that is going to have to be justified to you as to whether it has an everlasting existence. And I think that the councilperson, the councilwoman, Tessa is correct. When you have had a period of time and all the calm has gone away and you're looking at it scientifically, you'll know whether that is a benefit or a real detriment and maybe even something that could be a real liability. And I don't think that money should be your concern if it ends up with the last one. If it's a real liability, if it has any danger to anyone, and that is not just a theory, then you may have to act. But if it's a monetary thing, that's also something you have to think about, too. So to justify a monetary solution, you would have to have some sort of a, a purpose for the monetary solution that went around the area of liability and safety. And I think that you should never do that unless you have a study, a good study, the ninety-day study that tells you exactly how it is affecting the people who use it with the school board, the people who use it all winter. I mean, we're going to have, finally, the snow is here and the plows are operating and people are shoveling their driveways and all that. They're parking their cars. All of that experience is going to be in the next couple of months and within that ninety-day period. And when you get that report, I think then, whatever you do, I will support, number one. And number two, whatever you do will be based on some sort of factual reason, not an emotional reason, or they shouldn't have done it reason.
Quick, quick question. Who's writing the report?
Pardon me?
Is the PD writing it? Engineering writing it? Who's writing it?
I think it's engineering and police, isn't it?
I believe it's just a ninety-day trial. There's no study being conducted by the administration.
Well, who's, who's monitoring the ninety-day trial? Is somebody actually taking into consideration any complaints? Any, making any record of what, what people have discovered as a result thereof? Are they making a complaint of it or not making a complaint? Or you're not hearing anything?
So Judge, Judge, when we added the ninety-day trial, you have to understand that when this, when this island was completed, they had the company that did, that did the island also put up the signage, okay? So the, the company put up the signage. Our sign department. So the, the company put up the signage. Our sign department did not put up the signage. So that was all done without being legislated for. So in the meantime, for us to figure out where we were financially and, and to see how the, the, uh, the island was, was configuring itself and how it was working out, we didn't want to permanently add the signage to the, to, to be legislated for. So what we did was, we asked the public safety commissioner, on behalf of the city, to institute a ninety-day trial for those pieces of legislation, because the police department had set down no parking signs as well. Well, we didn't want to make those temporary, or we didn't want to make those permanent parking signs until we knew that we were, whether or not we were going to remove that traffic island. Now, me personally, again, I don't want to, uh, to have to get a statistic of a child getting hit by a car trying to go play in an island across the street that has sidewalks on it. And that's, that's personal, that's my personal, you know, op, opinion on that. And I think that if you do, you, you may, if you do decide to keep this, maybe add some pedestrian wa, you know, crosswalks and so on and so forth, to give people the idea that people can cross that intersection to go to that island. With that, with that said, again, this was no, no study was being done. The only thing that we received initially was from CNS, was, which to me was a bunch of nonsense, because that came after the island was already completed, too. So I, I think that if it really comes down to having a traffic study done, I mean, you're going to have to have either UPD and engineering there for, for a period of time that doesn't commence in the wintertime. I mean, and what statistic are you looking for? Somebody getting hit by a car, a bus hitting a child, uh, not being able to park? I mean, those are the type of things you got to figure out what you're actually trying to look for.
What I'm looking for is councilperson, so I'm, I'm looking for somebody, somewhere, maybe in the injured department. If, if anything happens up there in this ninety-day period, if there's any complaint with us, or that it be recorded.
Sure.
So we know what, if, like, if nothing is there, and all that time, nobody's complaining, there have been no incidents, there's nothing recorded.
Judge, I think that we would have to restart that as well.
Well, as far as any complaints, I'm sure UPD would.
Yeah, and so we're also getting quite a bit through the 311 app.
I mean, so?
We're also getting a lot of, um, complaints through the app.
So, somebody recording your complaints, any recordings?
Yes.
What your comments are? Somebody doing that?
Yeah, Judge, they're through a, um, an app the city has.
So it's all, it's all recorded?
Online.
It's all being recorded. Mr. Giorgio, you know what I'm getting at, don't you?
Yes.
I think that when they have to make a decision, it might be a financial decision, and you have to justify that. And if they make it, and it has some justification to it, well, then, fine. So you have to pay for something, or you don't pay for something because it isn't justified, and there are no complaints. You know, parking out there before was never an issue, because there was nothing there, but a big empty space where trucks turned around, plows turned around. Judge, let me go to Joe now.
We, uh, we've been beating this up for a, for a while. So why don't we, at our next meeting, um, have a price on what it would take to take it down completely? I know I've, I've heard, uh, Mayor Galemy talk about it, that he actually, if it was smaller, and get a price on if you can make it smaller and safer. And, uh, I, I don't know what you can do, but like, like the judge said, it's over and done. We, we need to do something about it.
Smaller doesn't help. Still, you still have to have those traffic patterns in place.
Right.
That that's the big decision.
Right, okay.
So they might want it smaller.
Well, I'm not saying if you want it, but.
Then somebody here would have to write a resolution, requesting a, a real study.
I don't think that a real study needs to be done.
Uh, if I may also.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, I think if you hold off, I mean, at least see what you get in the wintertime from the ad of, of complaints and your positive reviews towards it, and then wait until.
Talk to DPW and what the plows going through.
What traffic you can actually get done during the, the summertime, is right.
Okay.
If we're going to be talking about safety, and that's perfectly fine with us, obviously, but I've talked about this before in this room, Turo versus New York City. If we're going to be talking about safety, you want the actual studies to back it up. If it comes out, because before, let's just admit, it was a wide-open space. I loved it when it was painted lines. I thought that that visual was really good. Uh, but the city could be liable if we don't choose the safer option, and it has to be genuinely what the studies reveal from that. And I don't think we just need to do ninety days. Obviously, that's why the signs are there, but I don't know what day this was actually resurrected, but we can get all the data from the beginning of that. But if we're concerned about the liability, which is so funny to hear people, uh, actually concerned now with some pedestrian deaths and accidents, and it's been a frustrating process, and it's no news to anybody in here how I feel about that. But, uh, I would love to revisit a lot of things when it comes to pedestrian safety in the city. I know we've had three deaths on Genesee Street in the past few months alone.
One wasn't on Genesee Street, it was on a side street, so whatever.
So, we have major intersection issues, uh, a lot of, I got the Mohawk, or the motor vehicle accident report. And I really just want people to care about pedestrian safety, no matter what, and not just when it's an island in a neighborhood that they're upset about. That's really it. So, thank you.
Mike, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to say, just from the administration, um, standpoint, is it's really bad practice to do something and then ask for forgiveness later, and the process matters. And we should always be looking at the process and doing things the right way from the beginning, and not continually having these conversations about things happening without the proper chain of command, proper process, so that we're back in the situation. The, the debate should not be whether, the debate should have been before it even happened, not what we're doing now.
We got that, we got that. Uh, Mark's going to get the last word. Anybody else report it?
I got one question, Judge. Since the previous administration did this without permission, can we sue them?
We've done many of these without permission.
Can, can we sue the previous councilperson and the mayor for after, after, wait a minute, after councilpeople, we control the roads, told them to cease and desist on what they were doing, and all of a sudden, they, they continue still pouring it after the fact, even though they're violating the rules of the charter of this city? Can I, can we sue them?
I don't think that the, I don't think that anyone went to any of the legal people and, uh, uh, who are, some of who are at the table, and ever asked them any questions about anything. They acted in the course of their employment, uh, being directed, uh, by a, uh, executive branch that said, "You have this money, you're going to expend it." I, I thought that whole theory was kind of fraught with danger when I, when that was proposed a long time ago, sitting here saying, "Councilman, you got $200,000 to spend, you know, spend it." Well, I think a lot of, some people took that to heart, but you could spend it. And there's also, there were some, uh, provisions in all of that money thing about who could spend it and not ask anybody how to, how to do it. So there were a lot of, so to say that everybody knew clearly what their legal status was at that time, I, I think as, even I say, I don't think that that exists, and the answer to your question, I think, would be unsuccessful. Now, somebody else of a legal nature could disagree with me, but I think would be unsuccessful, because you can't point to one individual. It was a, a general frame of mind at the time, that's what I was trying to explain to our new, to new people. At the time, there was so much money floating around and things being done. Next thing you knew, when a po, a slide pumped up someplace, a building was built at the end of Rutter Street at Proctor Park. It was a building. Well, now, I don't remember ever a building ever being built that wasn't proposed by the common council, and we built it, whether it was, uh, in the park or anywhere else. But there was a building one day, and the, the building was all built when everybody finally, where did the money come? It came from that big fund. So, I mean, it all went on, and I don't think, and my purpose is not to stick my finger out and point at a person. People up in that engineering office are employees, and they are told what to do, and, uh, sometimes councilmen tell people to do something, and they think that they, uh, have the authority to tell them to do that. Well, I'm telling you, you can't do that, and I defer my.
But, but the question I have, Judge, Judge, the question I have.
Majority leader there.
Judge, Judge, but the question I have, they did it without authority of us. So when I tell them, "Oh, you can't do this, you got to stop them," well, I can't tell them that because they're city employees. But all of a sudden, they can do it without coming through us. So it doesn't make any sense.
But I was, it was after the fact, though, Mark.
I see.
It was, it was, it was at the beginning. At the beginning, you could stop anybody from doing anything that you think is an improper act. I did it, uh, so many times, I can't tell you, and was successful. But in this situation, it was a fait accompli, they used a French term. It was there. It wasn't like, it wasn't there, it was there. All it was, the only thing was left was that we got, we were going to pour a concrete in the center. That's it. But the, the frame, everything was there. It was nothing different. And we wanted to stop that, thinking that if we have to break it down, we only have to break down the edge, right? Am I correctly?
Yes, that was the intention.
Well, there's more than an edge there now. But in any event, I tell, I think, to digress too long, the answer to your question, I say no. The answer to your answer to this question, no, and other legal minds can disagree with me. I don't think it'd be successful, because I don't think you could find a defendant and clarify it.
Charlie, anything on that, or are you just going to?
I agree with the judge.
Bob, look, look, look.
Kind of the fact that no one's ever done it. Tells you a whole.
Stone also, like, against the common council.
I always say, we're smart, I always say, no, I'm talking about statewide, nationally, anywhere.
Well, you know, it's always been.
And I've always said, we're always smarter than everybody else, and we're not that smart.
We're, we're first, we're the first.
Bob, one last question.
Until we see the money trail, I don't think that was, that was that, that ARPA money that was used to pay for that island in the first place. And if it wasn't, it should have came to the council before it did anything. The ARPA money, the mayor had control of the ARPA money and never came to us for anything, as everybody knows. But this project, I don't think was ARPA money, and I could be wrong.
The only thing I can tell you about that is when I did my projects, okay, I told them what I wanted to do, and Stephanie, um, the city engineers, they went to all the projects and told me how much it was going to cost, what you were going to do. And it, so there was, I mean, I didn't come to you guys, because we didn't have to, but they knew everything, what was going on, where it was going to be, and how it was done.
And, and they did that with my two projects as well, so I knew approximately what it was going to cost.
No.
But I'm saying, this particular project, I don't believe was ARPA money, and it should have came to the council for, for.
Well, if you remember, I think it was Councilman DeBrego at the time, wanted all, all of us to give them a list, if we, he read them out, of our projects. I think there was six of us. I think maybe two or three people said what they said, said what they were doing.
All right.
I want to put one last thing on the record. Sorry, I've said this before, but I don't think there was actually an ordinance that the city broke by doing this, because we've done traffic islands throughout the city on Lincoln Ave. We did it with Bob Burmasters in Columbia Square. So I don't think that any article seventy-eight could be pursued, because nothing was actually illegally done.
All right, thank you. I got a question here, because I'm sort of stepping into this. We have yield signs, same location, intersection where it stops, same locations, and no parking. Is that all part of the ninety-day, uh, look at?
Those are recommendations by the police department. If the island stays, that those should be put in place, uh, in that area.
So, so am I saying we're going to, we're going to continue to keep these in committee until this is done? All right.
Yes.
Um, any, any last words? We got three minutes left. Would you like to say?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, on proposed ordinance number seven, eight, and nine, I believe I'm the listed, uh, council member who sponsored, um, these three ordinances, but I, I just do want to note, uh, they were submitted to the council prior to my term beginning, and I believe I'm added on here just by virtue of, of representing the district where the area is affected.
And you could dismiss them, and they could be introduced at a later date, if you don't, you don't want to turn any of them down.
No, at, at this time, I, I'm okay with that. I just wanted to note it that, um, that I believe that was the reason why I'm listed as the sponsoring council member.
All right, well, everybody, thank you very much. I'm going to complete this meeting, unless there's something, one last thing anybody would like to say. All right, meeting's adjourned. All right, meeting's adjourned. Meeting adjourned, and we've got two for eight, eight pieces of legislation to talk about. Should be rather quick. The first one is a marriage officer for city clerk, 2425, for Melissa Scartino and Andrew Castella. Any questions? If not, the second one is a marriage of officers for the common council. Includes each council person and the president. Any questions? The third piece is from Samantha. Samantha, would you like to speak about this?
No, that's gonna stay in committee.
That's gonna stay in committee?
Yeah.
Thank you. The fourth piece here is, looks like a hearing for Royceville Street, Lother Street, Division Street, for $135,000 from U. Urban Renewal.
This is just for the public hearing, right?
This is just for the public hearing.
Okay.
If I can speak on that, I'd like to.
And I'd like to speak on it also.
Joe?
So as far as this, I'm on the URA board as well as you were, Bob. I voted against this, not against the project. It's a great project. There was board members, it was one of these deals. We had a special meeting. They gave it to us at the last minute. I need more information on it. I need a presentation on it. I've looked into this. I talked to a couple of board members who had no idea that this project was gonna be done there. They said it was gonna be done on part of building on Bleecker Street. Then there was, Mohawk Valley Gardens was giving them property there. This property, right where this piece of property is, is an entertainment district. And I don't think that that fits there. I'd love to support this, and if you guys vote on it, you vote on it. But I'm just telling you why I voted against it. What's that? The city owns it, yes. And they're gonna be doing live research with animals and stuff like that, which is great. I'm not totally against any of that. But we have an entertainment district down there, and I don't think that's the proper spot for that building. It's not my area. I'm just explaining why I voted against it.
If I may, no, okay. So I was, had the chance to actually go visit Masonic Research Labs last week and to see the work up front, to hear the presentation directly from them. It's incredible what they do here. I'm still blown away. All this is happening in Utica, and I had no idea. This is such a point of pride for the city. And this is where I think the location proposed for the spot is a fantastic location. I agree, it's an entertainment area, but it's also for businesses. And the more people we can get down there working, the better it will be for all businesses. So they'll go over numbers of how many people that they have. And also, when you have people with these, this level of salaries, you know, 60-plus to, I think it was almost upwards of 100 people. And that's huge for the area. And they can touch on that. But I'm really hoping, one of the things that the Masonic did is that they're in touch with our council president, and they're discussing a day where it would work for everybody to go down and actually visit the lab. Of course, they could do a presentation here, but I think without seeing it, I think you might miss some of the components of how incredible it really could be to have this research in downtown. And what they're doing even globally, it just really sets it apart, and Utica should give it a front row seat in this area. So I don't know if, not to change out your order, but, I don't know, wait, Rock, do you want to touch on the dates now? Or were you gonna send something out later?
We're gonna send the email.
All right, thank you.
Bob? Just gonna, Mr. McCarthy is here to speak on behalf of the Masonic home today on this particular item that we're talking about.
No.
No, we're not.
You're not gonna speak on it?
He's here just to say it's...
I was here to have your questions, but no questions.
Yeah, I think he's going to wait until we come up with a...
So he's signed up to speak, right?
We were, yeah. The goal is to get everybody there for the presentation. She's the whole thing. But he is here, if anybody had last minute things, and they were hesitant to even put it in a public hearing. Nobody knows anything about it, he's speaking on it.
Right.
Yeah, we're gonna send an email, try to come up with some dates so we can tour the facility. And then he can come back and speak. Yeah, or he could do it there when we're there.
So he's choosing not to speak now?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
Joe?
Yeah, the only thing I just want to reiterate with councilperson, I always said, she's absolutely right. Okay, it's a great project, it's, but my point is, 10 o'clock in the morning, they shoved it in our face when I didn't hear no presentation, I didn't know anything about it. So when we're gonna go do that, we'll see. And I would think that their board members would know that they were gonna put it there. I would like to know why they backed out of the other locations. There was a location on Bleecker Street across from Oskar Nite's Pizza that they were gonna go in. There was a place at the end of, where Mohawk Valley Gardens was giving them property, where it wasn't in the district. That's my only question. Thank you.
Just a bit of a procedural question. In the last whereas clause, posting the information in the observer dispatch, given the council's January 3rd vote to make the Daily Sentinel the official newspaper, will that change now in this proposal and of course, moving forward? I just want to make a note of that.
It was just written on the...
Prior to.
It was on the 29th.
Sure, so now... amended that, just wanted to ask, thank you.
Any other questions? The next piece?
Honestly, before you go to the public hearing, just, if it's gonna go into the public hearing, it probably should just be done now. It's an ordinance. Just redo the piece of legislation and introduce it tonight with the Thursday rule. And make sure that it's changed at the bottom, introduced or amended on the floor tonight.
For the public hearing?
Yes. Right, but still, it still should be, just amended on the floor tonight. I'm sorry to say that.
Okay, the next piece, we just place in committee? Next one, proposal number six. Jack, would you like to speak on this?
This is an ordinance limiting section 2-204 of Utica City Code.
What this is gonna do is that because of the issues we've had in the past with overruns on city streets and monies being spent without the council's permission, we'd like to put a paragraph in there, a change. Whereas any, anytime the executive department would like to come in here and do additional work on the streets that we require your bond, we would like that to go through the council. First of all, the council is in charge of the streets. Capital projects for the streets and any bonding through that should go through the council. This to alleviate any, any issues that we've had in the past where we're having to bond for anything related to street repairs, street reconstruction, should come through us prior to that actually being, being performed, not after it's performed. Thank you.
Councilperson Burmaster, you may have the floor.
You may.
Thank you. So, Jack, if you could, could you reiterate, what is the reasoning that you're putting this forward?
We all know that this year, that there was, there was money being spent on road repair in certain areas of the city after, after the budget, the capital budget was approved for the roads. Additional monies were spent on certain roads in North Utica and other areas of the city that initially weren't completed. It was after the fact, it was decided to fix these streets, to repair these streets. They created an over, an overspenditure within the capital budget for the $5 million spent. And this will alleviate that issue.
Okay.
Because prior to, let me finish.
No, I know.
Because prior to that, we're trying to fix an issue that the last administration, we felt on this particular issue, did over, went over their, their, actually what they should be doing. And, you know, I talked to the mayor on this, we discussed it, he's fine with it at the end of it. This is gonna discuss, not just, we're not, we're not trying to take any power away from the mayor. He agreed with us this morning, this afternoon, we talked about it. This is not for this mayor to take any power away. It's not for the next mayor to take any power away. This is just to make sure checks and balances, that the money being spent on the roads should go through the committee, this particular legislative body, prior to any discussion of any additional monies being spent.
Okay, so you're restricting the, does this have to do with the paving, the paving plan?
Yes.
Okay, so a couple of things, and I'm very, I'm very, very, very confused by a number of things. So first of all, when we, when the introductory local law number four passed in 2016, what it did was, it expanded on the capital expenditure that was already, that was already in place on the charter. This was done by referendum, okay? When, when you talk about section, we'll talk about 7.003, capital expenditures, budgetary appropriations, it specifically states that in each fiscal year, the $5 million shall be allocated for the construction of streets, paving and resurfacing thereof, of repaving of curbs shall be paid for by direct budgetary appropriation to the amount of $5 million. For the fiscal year, oh wait, timeout. That was not it.
Can I explain that to you?
Yeah, no, okay, so let me, so let me, so let me explain that.
I'd like to explain it, sir.
So, so when we, so when we originally put in that local law, we specifically stated that five million dollars had to be allocated for the paving plan through a capital expenditure, it only could have been done for resurfacing roads, it could have been done for milling fill, and total reconstruction of roads, okay? The common council specifically put that local law in there. So the problem that I have with this, with this ordinance, okay, is that, in your own admission, you're admitting that the administration violated the city charter. Now, to me personally, in my, my preference of an opinion, is I'm not going to add laws that laws were already broken originally. So in the original code of ordinance, it specifically stated that you could only spend that monetary amount. Now, it was two point five million dollars in the original budgetary amount, which it specifically states of what was budgeted for, so that's already in the capital expenditure, which already has a line item inside the city budget, okay? Which this was just the last two thousand twenty-three, two thousand four city budget, it says contractual engineering and paving, five million dollars, and they did a charge back from engineering to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which came up with a grand total of five million dollars. Now, if the mayor followed the charter and did what he's supposed to do, that extra two point five million dollars in your bond ordinance specifically states that you can only spend two point five million dollars in paving roads. And when we drafted the original local law, and Jack, you were on the council then, we specifically talked to the bond council, that they said that roads could, we could only use those bond ordinance for roads to be paved with the life expectancy of a PPU up to fifteen years. Hence the reason that we are on a fifteen year paving program. So to me, it, you're either going to have your, in your own admission, admitting that the administration violated the, the, the law that was on the books in the city charter, okay, never went through the council when he spent more money, because technically, because there was only five million dollars in this paving plan, and we got to separate the two of what we're talking about, so you're either talking about paving plans, or you're talking about money spent on paving. So if you're telling me that the mayor spent an additional five million dollars, and he wanted to reserve it towards the paving plan, that means that he would have had to transfer money to the common council through, through the Board of E and A, which would have had to come over an expenditure of over fifteen thousand dollars, which was never, which was never done on behalf of the common council. So that's number one. So on top of the fact that, if you're saying that he didn't spend money on the, the paving program, he's already in violation of the city charter, which already includes the capital reserve fund, which, which goes back to general municipal law, and, and your first part of your, your, your ordinance, and, and pursuant, in, in the capital, it's in section A. First of all, it says pursuant to section six C of general municipal law, which if you read general municipal law, it goes back to permissive referendums, it goes back to how, how, how a council can actually allocate funding that's mandatory, which would have to be done per referendum, which, which we did do that in the original local law. With, with, and it also states as amended, first of all, you can't amend general municipal law, so that, that paragraph in itself has to be reconsidered. And we're talking about the paving reserve fund, you can't restrict a paving reserve fund when the paving reserve fund is already restricted. It's already in there specifically stating that the city budget's five million dollars, that original five million dollar allocation has to go to, again, resurfacing, reconstruction, or milling fill of roads. That's it, that paving, that, that is done, that's already in there, that's already part of the charter, that's already explained, that's it. Finu, okay? If the last administration violated that, then the last administration was in violation of the city charter, and that should maybe, the councils, instead of adding a, a piece of, a, a, a piece of law, that already is, is already on the, on the city books and in the city charter. And I think that's the biggest thing that we have to, we have to come to gripes with, is that either the council's going to take action on the previous administration, and by subpoena power, bring them in, and bring them up on charges against the, in violation of the city charter, or the council's going to move on and hold this administration accountable for following the laws that's on the books, such as paving. And if the, the current administration decides to violate the, the charter once again, whether it's by bypass of the Board of E and A, whether it's by bypass of giving the council the charter, and, and following the rules, and making sure that that funding's in there, then that's going to be on this administration, and for this council to hold that person responsible. But I think that we need to take the, the two and realize what we're doing here. We're either going to make a law, and what you're saying, and by, by looking at this ordinance, is saying that the previous administration broke a law, hence the reason they should probably possibly be brought to this council and be brought up on charges, or we're going to allow the new administration to follow the rules on the book, and if they do something wrong and not follow the charter, bring them up on possible, the same charges that the last administration should be brought up on. So I, I, it is already stated in there, it is already in the charter, number one. The, the paving ordinance was already done by permissive referendum, the council passed it, the voters voted on it, that's what we're mandated to do, and it was specifically written to that, to that note. And if, again, the previous administration didn't want to follow what was on the books, and that's, that's on them, and maybe they should be held accountable.
Originally, I was going to put this under section seven zero 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 three, which is the charter thing you're talking, and I'm fully aware of how we went to the referendum, we passed it, and, and you'll see in the history of the referendum after that, we did some jockeying with that, about reducing it and doing that, we did all of that, and that was all done with the consent of both the executive branch and the legislative branch. Now, when Councilman Lomenco came, he said, how could this thing have happened? And I said, well, look, never talk about something you don't have personal knowledge of. I have no personal knowledge of any transactions between the members of the common council and the members of the administration. I'm not present at any of those meetings, I don't know what they agreed on, and I'm sure everyone involved was aware of the law as we are. In fact, you and I, and some of these people who've been here that long, remember the referendum, we were part of it. So, you have to give me the benefit of doubt, I knew about it, and I know about it. Now, the only type of place that they really talk about paving specifically, is the section here of the law, which is in the ordinances, not local law, it's an ordinance, it's about paving, and it says about the reserve fund, and you're absolutely right. And the reserve, and we're not changing the municipal law at all, the municipal laws all in section ten, sixteen, eleven, and all, I read all of that, I know all about that, I'm just saying to you, if there comes a time, and evidently, there may have come a time, when the executive branch or members of the legislative branch wanted to do more paving in areas that hadn't been paved, and they did it, but they did it in improper, improper way, and to, when Councilman Lomenco called me and says, what can we do to avoid that from ever happening again? Because that's, again, when council people do and have meetings, and do some outside the sitting at those tables, this is what, what happens. I'm not going to put the blame on anybody, that's not the point, he just asked me a question, how can we prevent that from happening? Now, Charlie and I were talking about it tonight, I said, look, Charlie, and, and, because he had some questions about it, I'm sure Mr. Giorgio did too, I said, look, Charlie, if you really read the thing, all it's saying, we control this anyway, because we control bonding. When I say we, I'm always talking on behalf of my clients, you control bonding, they don't. Now, I agree with you, I agreed with you at the end of the last councilmatic session of the other council, I said to you when you brought up the issue of the bonding, I came down and I said to you, you're absolutely right. I don't know how that happened, but it happened. My only remark to Mr., the other councilman, now president and chair leader, when you incur a debt in your city, you got to pay it. So you could talk about that until your head fell off, but you were going to pass those bonds, and I was going to be a part of people to tell you to pass them, because you've got a, an incurred debt, you must pay it, that's the law of the city. So, we were going to correct what was done. So I said to Jack, the only thing you can do is I can add at the end of that thing, a paragraph, that if the councilmen decide that there, there's more work to be done, and it has to be done, and the executive agrees with it, the executive can agree, and the council can agree, to do something extra, as long as they do it by ordinance, and they're going to do, remember, the money in the, in the budget is that you, requires you, that you must put the five thousand, five million in there. It doesn't say you can't put more.
Right, and I guess that's my-
And it doesn't say, if the executive agreed, one year we did, remember, we did less, because you can do that.
I wasn't here, and I wouldn't agree to that.
Yeah, well, we did that. So what I'm saying to you, this was that, the only purpose of this was to make sure that this ain't can ever happen that way again. And I said, what is the harm of it? It doesn't violate any rules, doesn't violate any laws, the executive can still do what he wants, but he can't go paving roads that he doesn't have the money for.
Judge, and here's the-
And nobody can ask him to pave roads that he doesn't have any money for.
Judge, and I, and I, and I, obviously, I agree with the fact that nobody should have went and spent money without having that monetary amount towards roads. The problem that I have, it, say this, say we take this ordinance out, right, this ordinance never existed, the one you drafted with Councilman Lomenco and Councilman Burmester.
You don't need it if you don't want it.
You have five million dollars that's been budgeted for through your capital expenditures at minimum. If anybody spent that five million dollars and wanted to spend more money for capital expenditures through paving, what they would have had to do at the Board of E and A was they would have either had to transfer money into that account to make sure that they had that, that, made sure that they had that money there, okay? That would have went through the council, the council would approve that, transfer funds into that account. With that said, the administration also should have never bonded or never spent money without knowing that that monetary amount was in, was not in those funds, hence the reason that it's what, ex post facto, you can't do something after the fact, that you now made the council mand, they had no other choice but to borrow two point five million dollars because you spent that money, still against the rules, because you should have never spent money unless that money was allocated into those accounts before it was done. Because I know when I have a credit card, I'm not spending an extra ten thousand dollars on my credit card unless I know that that money's there, and that was physically, fiscally irresponsible of this administration, and also was again in violation of the charter, because you should not spend money unless that money's expended for, or budgeted for. That's your financial, that's your fiduciary responsibility. That is not the mayor's money to spend, that is taxpayer money to spend, and if you don't have taxpayer money to spend, you shouldn't be spending that money. And that's exactly what happened this, this last time. And the only other thing that I will say about it, is this, this whole, and, and, the reason that I put in the, the reason that I put the audit in, into committee, and I think that this will solve a lot of our problems, even before this ordinance is, is passed, because to me, this ordinance, it doesn't do anything, because there's already laws on the book, and I think adding more laws to the book when we don't follow the ones that we already have, is a serious problem, and that's just, and that's my personal opinion. And I'm not saying that the, the law is drafted, I mean, you could add general municipal law, you could add this in there, you could add that in there, at the end of the day, everybody knows that they have a budget, they know that they have a budget of five million dollars that they have to spend, that is a mandated responsibility that's been, that was done through a capital expenditure, not by, not, and that wasn't actually done by myself, that was actually done in the council, what, back in like nineteen ninety-six, when they originally put that referendum out there? The only thing that this body did, was we kind of came up with a plan over a fifteen year expectancy, was, was to spend two point five million dollars in budgetary amount, and then borrow that two point five million dollars. Now, when you look at this, we already know that that's mandated to do that. Say that the city had an extra three million dollars, and they wanted to put three million dollars in and only borrow and bond for two, the bonding could still only be done for paving, because that, that's the life expectancy and the bond that you actually approve through that. So either way, at the end of the day, I'm not, I am not saying that that ordinance is, is, it is, it is, it is not drafted wrong by any means, but there is already laws on the books that were not followed, and I think that that's a bigger problem that I have, is how do we hold that person responsible for not following the, the codes that are on the, the laws, the charter that's on the books now?
My job here is to make sure that I protect you from doing something from yourself that puts you in jeopardy. And I think sometimes in government, there are too many private conversations that everybody's not privy of, and so I'm not privy of those. I'm just saying to you, when you ask me a question of how I could say in a written form that that isn't going to happen again, I respond, you, you know, propose, I compose, and you dispose. I said to Mr. Brown today, when we talked about it, I said, really, it's verbose, I know that, you know that, I said, because you can't do, but, but ask them to do the bonding later-
That's my point.
After you, somebody has somehow done the paving that wasn't supposed to be done, I'm, I'm not going to, I'm just saying you can't do that anymore.
So, I guess if, I guess my, my point is, that if something was done wrong-
I get your point.
Then somebody should be held responsible, and I don't want to add in more jumbo to what could be possibly violated once again.
But again, when you propose, and I compose, and you dispose, I don't really care whether you pass it or not, I'm just saying to you, this was a fail safe, I was asked to prepare, that's my job. Whether you understand why I did it this way, and whether you accept it, that's your job, and I had, I want you to know, makes no difference to me one way or the other, how you dispose.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe?
Yes. I was going to have a heart of thanks.
Yeah, so I, I just, a couple of things. So, it's the third time that I, I heard Councilman Lomenco say, Lomenico say, they paved Dexter Streets in North Utica, I heard on the radio that a councilman-
That's the first time that I've ever said it.
Wait, wait, I have the floor, I have the floor.
That is the first time I, I alluded to it.
Okay, well, you did, but it's been on the radio.
But, but, please correct yourself on that, then.
Well, it's the third time I heard it, it's the first time from you.
Well, it's not the first, not the third time you heard it from me.
So, on the radio, two or three days, I keep hearing, oh, the mayor knew, and he paved Dexter Streets. You know what this is right here? This is the paving list. You know the two streets that Joe Beatrice asked for to get done, the three streets? Number one, my district, besides South Utica, are neck and neck, is the biggest district in the area, they did three streets in my whole area. I shut my mouth, I didn't say a word, okay? I led the charge to turn the complete streets back. The day after it got turned back, my three streets came off the list. So North Utica wasn't getting one street paved, you know what? I fought for my streets, okay? You know what, you know how much those two streets cost? I got two out of the three back. You know how much it cost? Four hundred thousand, not two point five million dollars. And I promised, I never would say a word, what the city engineer told me up there, he quit a week after, okay? Stood up and said, yes. I said, well, okay, we're over, why don't you take one street from everybody? Because you led the charge to turning the complete streets back, okay? That's what he said to me. You know what? Why would we pass this? And I don't mean to get upset, but I, I kept my mouth shut since June, I could have made a big thing about it, or in July, that they're taking the streets down, I never said a word, but somebody had to open their mouth, okay? Number one, we already have this process, it goes through, there's three steps, it goes to contract and supplies, there's change orders, the money's got to be there, okay? There was no budget director there to, to say anything, there was, the mayor was leading the charge, he's the guy, okay? In fact, our mayor now has charge orders from, change orders from November and December that were approved, but they want him to sign, okay? Then it goes to the controller, okay? The controller knows what's going on, there's a member of the controller's office on the contract and supply too, okay? They know what's going on, and then it goes to the budget director. Why, you think we've never been over in paving before? But we had a budget director would say, take it out of this fund and put it in that fund, we didn't have any, okay? So you had three steps that are right there, that we don't have, okay? So we don't need, it's checks and balances, and if it's done right, it's done right. Three streets in North Utica, three streets, they don't mention that, I worked with, with Assemblywoman Button Sean, and got five hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the state touring program for Herkimer Road that they put in there, and what'd they do? They paved it three years ago, they went and put some, they overdid it, which is a good thing, okay? Three streets, and then you take them away from me, and you weren't getting none? Guess what? My job is to fight for the people who elected me, and that's what I do. So this is, all this legislation is, is smoke and mirrors, you don't need it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Steph?
I just want to say, so, I've reviewed it, and I've spoken, well, I shouldn't say I have, but our office has spoken with, with Charlie about the ordinance, I would recommend that you put it in committee at this time. An error was made, how that error was made, who made the error, is stuff that we are addressing, and we're moving forward to make sure that it doesn't happen again. Whether or not the proposed amendment to the ordinance actually does that, I believe a number of people touched on it, I mean, that is the process, as Joe laid out, I mean, there is a process that's set forward, we don't believe it was followed, so adding this is kind of redundant, but we are working to address it and make sure it doesn't happen again, so I would leave it in committee, to see if we can find better ways to address the issue that happened, and to actually, you know, make sure it doesn't happen again. So that's my recommendation at this time.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, the mayor's office is not in favor of this legislation at this time, but if it were to end up in committee, he would be okay with that. time, but if it were to end up in committee, he would be okay with that.
Okay, thank you. Now, do you have a, do we have a problem putting this in committee? Our, our next piece of legislation is Proposition Resolution Number Seven from Councilman LaMonaco and myself. Councilman LaMonaco, would you like to speak on this?
Yeah, could I? I, I think it took you guys longer to, to write this, this resolution than it did to actually get what you're trying to get accomplished, no offense. So, our website already translates, translates everything that's already on the website. So the only thing that has to be done is our city clerk has to take the meeting minutes, send them to Mr. Matulow. Mr. Matulow can upload them to the website under Government and Common Council and it'll automatically transfer them into all the languages that are on the Google Translate website on the city website.
Good to know, I did not know that.
Yeah.
She's exactly right on that. And what I did is I went to see Mr. Matulow on this and I asked him, and I had a meeting with him, I asked him, could it be done? Then I had a meeting with our, with our, uh, office, with Melissa, and, and she says, yes, we could do it. What they could do now is, they're gonna do it over in Word, and then after they translate it, they're gonna send it over to you or vice versa, correct?
Yeah.
So I just thought it was a good idea that, uh, the people in, in the city of Utica that don't speak English, if they wanna see the minutes of the, the meeting, they could go by and, and, and read it per se. And I think, uh, after it, it finally is completed, uh, you're gonna give us a demonstration and how they could get on the, on, on that site and they could, uh, have it translated. Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
So, thank you.
And I just, I just wanna make note too, that we, when we redid the city website, we actually used to upload the minute, the, the meeting minutes to the city website. And, um, Paul Brzezius, when he was in the city clerk's office, actually used to upload them. He used to be able to do it from the city clerk's office. And then when he left, they kinda took that responsibility from the city clerk's office and brought it back to Mr. Matulow's office. So the, the city did, the city did, the council did use to have that available and then, I don't know, in translation with the administration and people left, they, they stopped doing that. But it was done once like that before, that's how I knew you could translate that, to that.
So, so can we discharge this?
You could discharge it, yeah. It's, it's very simple. I mean, like I said, it already used to be done.
So we're gonna go ahead and vote on that, right?
They could do it. They could discharge it, I mean, it'll be done. It's not that big of a deal.
Well, I mean, you gonna vote on the resolution or not?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's already to be done, it's not like you're adding something new.
No, we're doing a new procedure because it wasn't done, uh, currently. So we're asking it to be done.
It's not like you're adding anything to it. I don't care if you guys wanna pass the resolution or not. I'm just saying that it used to be done and then the, the administration got back to it because they wanted a thorough review. It's all, because we upload ours to Ecode 360. Ecode 360 does not translate it, however, the city web, the city's website used, used to translate it for them. So that's all Drew has to do and Melissa is what, our city clerk, deputy clerk, when they get the meeting minutes, is just give them to Frank Matulow and use to do what they used to do and upload to the city website. And there's a little translation box right up at the top. When you go on the city's website, you click whatever language you want and it'll automatically transfer to every, to any language that you need.
So who makes that happen again?
It's all Drew has to do is just send it to the, Mr. Matulow. Very simple.
And, and this resolution will ask him to do it and then make sure it's done, okay?
It's not, I'm just saying. It's very easy.
Thank you. And it looks like our, our last piece of legislation is about an ordinance enacting Memorial for Marijuana Dispensers in the city.
Yeah. And I think, I think Mr. Gentile's gonna be here, um, Mr. Burma, Councilman Burmaster, um, to speak on, on this behalf. Our zoning code addressed a lot of things, um, this one in particular, um, it does not address. And although I do not agree with legislation coming down last minute, um, without being discussed, this kinda just gives us a little pause before we act on any legislation to amend the zoning code, just to kinda put a pause on, on, on medical marijuana facilities going inside the city. So, do you wanna speak?
Yeah.
Marijuana.
So, so I'll just go first. So, um, when the zoning code was done in, um, in February, when it was actually passed in February 2021, there was some language put in there concerning marijuana dispensaries in retail, um, but this was prior to the state enacting their legislation. So we had some anticipation about that this was coming, but didn't know the full extent. So there is some things in our zoning code that allows for marijuana dispensaries to be located within the city with a special use permit. Um, it was brought to my attention, and I'll let Mike address this, um, to do a moratorium, I've come before you and said on a number of occasions that I don't like moratoriums. Um, I don't think, they're not favorable, um, you know, because usually they get extended for long periods of time. We have been working right now to discuss some options to address it already, um, but we are starting to get an influx of applications for dispensaries. Um, and for full disclosure, we already had one pass, uh, we have two more that will be, uh, in front of the planning board. Uh, we anticipate that more will likely be coming. So that's the reason for the moratorium. It will not apply to anything that has either currently been granted or the two applications that are pending. Um, but as of the date, if you choose to pass it tonight, going forward, um, it will put a stop to any applications, permits, um, building applications, et cetera, that would be needed for these entities.
Would we have to readjust this every six months then?
If, if the council would choose to extend it, um, they have that, they can do that in their purview, although I believe the administration is looking to get this done as soon as possible and make the necessary changes.
The, the mayor's office has no, um, indication that we would need more than the six months that we're asking for now. We just wanna, you know, have a opportunity to revisit the zoning code, um, review some of the state guidelines to see what we can and cannot do, um, without continuing with the influx of applications. So again, um, you know, the six months is kind of a hard date for us. It's not something, we're not gonna come back every six months and ask more.
Hopefully, he gets it done within the six months and then we don't have to-
Oh, of course. That's definitely-
I had a question.
About the zoning code, I move on. It's not gonna be like the neighborhood retail and all that, because we got the administration on our side, so we'll get it done.
I have a question, Stephanie. Uh, with state law, does this try to supersede it or like, can you resolve that for me?
So, so that's part of the, the complication, um, with preparing legislation, amending the zoning code. This is relatively new, um, within the state, uh, being legalized, um, it's still obviously is a crime federally. Um, so there's a number of different factors, which is why it's not as simple as just saying where we want it within the city. I have a number of things that law has to consider. So that's also why we need the additional time to kinda make these recommendations. We may not be able to do anything, um, but we just need the time to study and figure out what we can and can't do and what we recommend.
Good.
You need, you need, you need six, you need a, a full council on this to pass it, correct? Because it's just, it's being put in-
It just came down tonight, right?
It's gotta come out tonight if we're gonna vote on it. It's gotta be a full council on this.
Does anybody have a problem with it?
The only thing, the only thing that I will say is, um, I, I think that if it comes down to, and I, obviously, I'll have this discussed with the administration, Brian, Stephanie, that if, um, there isn't anything that we can do to amend the actual zoning code, that we possibly add a section in there that doesn't allow it everywhere. And I think that that's part of the component that we have to limit the amount that could be, that could be brought up.
So, that is a question that I don't know whether or not we can put a blanket prohibit, prohibition on it. That is something that we need to consider. That, I don't know because of state regulations, we already opted into the program, so there may be some-
Sure, and I guess, but just at least giving the council at least some type of say on whether or not they want it in their neighborhoods, I think would kinda be-
Well, right now, so right now, it's only allowed in, in two districts. It's only allowed downtown and it's only allowed in, um, urban mixed use. Uh, and those are only by a special use permit. It's not allowed anywhere else. I don't think we're anticipating it being included anywhere else. Um, it's just whether or not we're gonna keep it in those two districts and whether or not we're gonna add any other regulations on those, um, such as the state requires to be a certain, uh, distance away from churches and schools and other entities, so adding that into our own process.
I smell marijuana at school, all, no, I'm just kidding.
So, that, that is the stuff that we need to consider, whether or not we can put a number limiting them, um, and other things like that, it's stuff that I have to look at legally. I just don't wanna have nothing, nothing be done. That's it. Thank you.
The, the six-month moratorium lifts automatically at the conclusion of the six months, no further action will be needed.
Can you say that again?
The, so the moratorium proposed automatically is lifted within the six months, no further actions needed by the council at that, at that date, so it sets, okay?
Unless you decide to extend it.
If you're gonna do it, put a date in there, July 17th. If you're not gonna do it, put it in committee. You have to add your nine votes, Steph. I, I have one more, I have one more question. Are we gonna bring out the zoo contract tonight or are we gonna leave it in committee? Okay.
When you guys say we have a lot of interest in these, do you have a number, a general number, how many people have been reaching out?
There's three already on our zoning-
Right, I'm asking Stephanie.
So, you know, I mean, we do have, I mean, one has already been granted, um, we do have two more, um, I just personally am aware that there's other that are being discussed.
A lot of it, a lot of it's top.
Oh, but would you say it's like-
Formal things.
Five or twenty?
And I guess we should clarify that a lot of times, these entities get, it's very much like a liquor license, they get a conditional license and then they seek out a location and then they come before the board. Marcus may know more if he's seen some pop up.
Yeah, so, um, people have asked us about it, I mean, we've had probably more than, um, two dozen inquiries. Um, the process now is that they go to the state first for license, there's an eligibility process and all that, then they're licensed by the state, and then we will let them select a location, um, within our zoning code to go. The state approves of that location somehow, and if our zoning board and the state agree, they go. Um, that's why I'm curious of when you talk and, you know, it might not even be worth discussing, but I'm worth to talk, what if we didn't allow it anywhere? Like, I think that DASNY will cite some if we're not fulfilling our obligation as a municipality.
So, that's what I need to research. We opted into this-
Right.
-program to allow the licenses, to allow them within the city. Um, if we failure to allow any of them within the city, we kind of are opting back out. So I don't know what the legal ramifications are of, of doing that. So that's what needs to be-
Yeah, I was told the ramification is DASNY will do it for you.
So, but, that's what I need to-
They what? They'll do it for you.
They'll force it?
Yeah, they'll just put it there.
But you're gonna make, one of the legal ones open up, the city's gonna make-
I don't think that, I think that it comes down to, we don't mind the medical, we don't want, we don't mind the marijuana dispensaries and the location, obviously, we opted into it to allow them to come. Problem is, is that you don't wanna pop it up like convenience stores every other corner. Right, that's, that's the issue here, is just trying to limit on what we, what our eligibility is.
But it's strictly to allow us to research and make sure that we're protecting our neighborhoods and where they can-
And I also just wanna add to, I appreciate the fact that we're now getting zoning agendas, planning agendas again, um, kinda nice to see, um, you know, what's, what's going on inside the city, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman.
So, for the smoke shops, do we put that in there too? Be, since smoke shops are popping up on corners and stuff?
Uh, I'm not gonna recommend you do anything with the smoke shops. We just did all of that and we just did the moratoriums. Um, I will let Marcus or Brian comment as far as anything new. To my knowledge, we have not gotten anything-
Recently.
Recently, um, on those, and we did, I forgot when we passed all the changes to the zoning code, addressing them, um, but it's only been a short period of time. So we're trying to let these processes play out a little bit.
I will say, for, right now, um, from a close perspective, I mean, I think that the latest rules that you guys passed, was it two years ago or a year ago, um, on the council, did limit the amount of corner stores that are popping up around the city. I don't know if that's because there's a saturation and they don't feel competitive or if it's your rules, but it, it had the desired effect.
Yeah, they were 43.
Right.
Three mile radius of Laker Street.
I would ask for less.
Can we talk about carpet stores too?
I would love to.
Making a point.
There's gotta come up, there's a lot of carpet, a lot of carpet sales going on on, on Laker Street.
Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, this is a different topic. I know, uh, we've talked about going in that back room, um, and I just added all this up, it's roughly thirty-six hundred bucks to go back to, for cameras, computers, um, I'd like to see us eventually go back there, I think it's better for all of us, but I'm just wanting to, I brought it up, I wanted to know what you guys think. I mean, probably wait till after the budget, see where we are or, um, but I don't want it to go away. I mean, it's been, we started out of here because of COVID and we're, this is starting my, uh, my fifth year and we're still here. You guys were here a lot longer than me, you liked it in the back.
Councilmember Beatrice.
Yes.
Page three, there's a couple different options. There's option one, option two-
Oh, okay.
-with the prices.
Okay. Oh, okay, all right. I, I, I thought these were all different then, okay. Well, I mean, that's even better, so.
And I will say, when we are, when we were in the back room, I mean, they were more formal discussions, I mean, you wouldn't have to have Charlie Brown turn his chair and not, you know, face his back to certain people, everybody was around a, a roundtable discussion. Um, we used to be able to have the opportunity to go ahead and not have the, um, um, gentleman that comes in and records his meetings, we were just, you know, we were able to press a button, the, the, the meetings were recorded, um, we were able to keep notes, um, so i, it, it was nice and it was more of a formal discussion. I like when Stephanie can talk to me and not have her back to me too, you know what I mean? So, I don't wanna see Brian Thomas this side of the face, you know, I want him to, you know, look at me when he's talking, you know? So I just, just, just for more formal discussion and it can be done, so.
My concern is with it is, is, and, and I agree it is a little more formal, but with the, my issue with this, and we'd have to look at, is there enough room for, uh, the, the audience, uh, when we do have meetings back there? Because they are invited to the council, the-
Right, well, they were invited before too.
All the meetings, like, today, looking at the audience right now, it would've been difficult to get them all in that room right now. So, this is one thing we have to look at. Uh, I would say, depending on the crowd, how we wanna work it. So, I, I certainly don't wanna prevent people-
How did you work it before?
-coming in. A lot of times, it would, you barely can move in there before, a lot of times. It, it, and it was specifically for certain meetings.
Right.
You know what I mean? A lot of times when there was nothing going on, uh, it, it wouldn't be an issue. But if we had a something serious that the, the public wanted to hear about, we would get a full, full crowd in there, standing room only. So it's one of the things I want to look at, and how would we alleviate that if that's the issue.
And if I can just try, for those listening at home, we have three proposals. The first one is about, this is just for video streaming services in the back, the first one's for $1,095. The next one is about $470 option, it's just more video streaming, just kind of a basic camera setup it seems. And then the last one is, just comparing two different options. So these really range from about 500 to a little over $1,000 if we decide to do this. Just want to let people know.
Clarification, Melissa, do you know how much money we spend per meeting now to record these, for committee meetings?
I want to see.
325 for the whole day. So I mean, even if we needed to hold a committee meeting on a separate day, you know, that would save us from some monetary amount, being able to do that from ourselves, too. So, if you're looking at ways to save money, that's a way, way to do it. Say that again.
So if we had it on a different day?
We would have to have him come in if we have a committee meeting. So we've actually paid him, because last time, I called the committee meeting and nobody showed up, so we got paid, and, you know, kind of wasted his time, my time, and everybody else's. If you set that feature up, you're allowed to play that, and it's allowed to be recorded on your own without having him to have him waste his time.
So it would be cheaper?
So you wouldn't have to come in?
It could be.
They wouldn't have to come in?
Just for committee meetings, yes.
Yeah.
How would that work? Is it just a budget?
Yeah, yeah, they would set it up where it'd be easily accessible to do that. So, just wanted to point that out.
There's no legislation.
Well, I think Melissa could put it in for her budget, and I think that if, it's not going to be any extra added to the, it's not going to be any additional money to add it to the budget, it's already budgeted for. So she's not, say she has like $10,000 in equipment, she's not adding 1,200 in equipment, she'll be adding the 10,000, and that's what the council's budgeted for. So just for clarifications, it wouldn't increase, it wouldn't increase our budget.
Yes, that's true.
Right. You don't need legislation for it.
We don't need legislation for it.
So it comes out of the common council's, I think it's office equipment or supplies account. So if you, I did email you all this on the 11th, I believe, so if you can get back to me on an option that you choose, then I can put that, calculate the dollar amount, put that into the budget.
Well, I mean, the best option is what, 1215, and?
I think that we should just send out an email, take a survey, option one, two, or three, and see what the council decides, and then go forward so that she could budget for it. And Drew, if you could, can you do that on a Google form, you know what I mean, section one, two, and three, so that it's easy for the council, they just got to press one option and go from there?
Yes.
Yeah, put an option for no.
For the difference in price.
It'll just be like every other survey done by the city.
Any other questions?
Um, yes, one last thing. I'm done after this. I'm sending around a sign up sheet for January 31st to tour the firehouses, the police station, and DPW garage. Commissioner Short, Chief Newn, or Chief, Chief Williams, and Chief Ingersoll, all had agreed that they will be there and ready for us to come to tour all their facilities on a bus tour, just to see how the progress is going, and so on and so forth.
And what the date was?
It was the 31st of January at 4:30. The bus will be here, you can drive your own vehicles, but we'll meet here at 4:30, and there's a sign up sheet. That'll be it. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second?
Yeah.
Joe, thank you.
We got Rock five minutes.
This meeting will call, will come to order, call the law.
Hey, let's go.
Ayello, Birmaster, Batar, Carcone, Urban, Beatrice, Williamson, Classimo Testa, Lametago, Geruzzi, all present.
Please rise for the pleasurable allegiance, qualify a moment of silence for the deceased members of the common council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
All. Except. Does the chair have a motion and a second to dispense the reading of minutes from the previous meeting?
I'll motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Are there people signed up to speak for the public hearing?
I'll give it one second.
Yeah, public comment. There's no one for public hearing, just public comment. Jason McCarthy?
I don't.
Common coun, Jason, hang on for a second. Common council has provided you a copy of section 3-244, public comment period. Are you in agreement with the rule?
Yes.
Please state your name.
Jason McCarthy.
You may begin.
So, good evening, my name is Jason McCarthy. I am the scientific operations director at the Masonic Medical Research Institute. I'm also a scientist, I run a research group there as well. So, for those that don't know us, we've been a part of Utica for 65 years. It's a long time. In that 65-year history, our science has contributed to things such as the pacemaker, the defibrillator. Over the course of the last decade, things have changed a little bit at the Masonic Medical Research Institute. So, back in 2018, we hired a new director of research, Maria Contritas. There were five scientists at the institute. It was a research group, five scientists, big building. So, over the last six years, what we've done is we rebuilt the institute into an internationally recognized research institute focusing on cardiovascular disease, neurodegeneration, so we have work in Alzheimer's, Parkinson's, autism, as well as autoimmunity. So interestingly, over the past six years, we've hired a lot of people. So we went from being five scientists to actually being 60 now. Our building can hold about 100 scientists, so over the last five years, we've had about five research groups. We just hired a new research group, started about two months ago, Tong Min Wu from University of San Diego. The rest of the faculty, we actually all came from Boston, so I was at Mass General Hospital and Harvard Medical School for 15 years. We've recruited a lot of high-level scientists to the area. This is still ongoing, we actually have a faculty joining us from Louisville in the summer. We have three additional faculty that have offered out, one actually just accepted it yesterday. We have another applicant coming in next week. Our institute is going to be full by the end of this year. We're going to have 100 employees, we're going to have about 80 scientists. So, as part of our future, and looking at sustainability, we know that we want to continue growing. So we've done so much in the last six years, that our trajectory is just phenomenal. And so part of this is to expand. And part of the idea is, so we are, we are basic researchers, and, you know, everyone always asks, you know, what have you done lately? I do basic research, I actually, I'm a chemist. I make particles that can target a single cell in your body with a drug to prevent side effects. I can target your spleen to treat a heart attack. So that's the type of work that I do. And so we bring in people that do that kind of research, but that is, that's basic research. And what we hope to do next is what's considered translational research. We want to translate what we do to the clinic. And part of that is working with clinicians, and being close to the hospital, being close to the people who actually see patients on a daily basis. So, part of our future goal, and why we're looking to build this new building, is to be near the hospitals, to be in the heart of it all, and allow us to build something that's even more spectacular than what we've grown now. So if you get a chance, look up the Gladstone Institute. The Gladstone Institute is in San Francisco, California. The Gladstone Institute started with a $7.8 million endowment in 1978. They are now 400 employees and 11 Nobel laureates. That's what we want to be here in Utica. That's our goal. So, we invite all of you, I know you're going to be getting an email about it, we're inviting you all to come to the institute and take a tour, see what we've done, see what we've built, kind of, I mean, when I came in 2018, the lab had never been renovated. It was built in 1958, it had never been renovated. Over the last six years, we've renovated it top to bottom. It is modern, state-of-the-art, it's actually, I mean, coming from Mass General Hospital and Harvard Medical School, I've done more here in the last six years than I did in 15 years at the MGH. And that's because of what we built, and who we brought in to help build it. And so, with that, you know, again, I invite you to come, I know that you're going to get an email about potential dates to come visit the lab, we'd love to have you come, we'd love to show you it all. I'm sure Ms. Ayello will tell you how interesting it is, and if you're a science geek, we're science geeks, and so we will, we will all geek out about the science that we do together. So if you have any questions, I'll be here the entire meeting, and thank you.
Mr. President, may I have the floor for one second, because this actually has to do with the scheduling of the meeting. Are you on a time constraint for when you would like this facility to be built? I mean, what is the timeframe around it?
Yeah, so that's kind of part of the conversation, and I know we're discussing it as well. So, there are stipulations that come with the purchase of the land that we want to actually go over. So, we're in the process right now of trying to get the funds to build the building, and so, the timelines proposed initially for the land are to, I believe, start building within a year. There's still additional remediation that needs to be done, there's still additional, we're actually buying the lot adjacent to it.
Is that city on, apartment?
It is not.
Okay.
And so that has yet to be remediated, so we actually have that to do as well.
So I can just jump in, so there's a number of things that they presented to us at the URA meeting to negotiate as part of either PSA or some kind of contract, so there's a number of different items. Contingency funding is a big one, the purchasing, the purchase of their, the adjacent lot that we don't own, we can't sell, so there's a number of other things.
Were these contingencies placed on the original sale through urban renewal?
They were, they were all discussed, and then when the URA issued the resolution, they asked that corporation council negotiate with there, because we couldn't, we couldn't have, it's going to take us some time to negotiate these.
Right, so I guess, I guess that goes back to my point. My original question is, what were the time constraints on there? And I think that, are you, have you been in discussions with the new administration about this location, or a possibility of another location, or is this strictly the one location that you're looking to expand on?
So there were, there were two sites that we issued, we're looking at. This is the one that we prefer because of how close it is to the hospital.
Are you able to disclose what the other location was, or, you don't have to, I can, that's fine, it's not that big.
Yeah, there wasn't, I mean, nothing was ever, like, we never had, we never even got a dollar value for anything else, it wasn't. Like, this is the only lot that we've been interested in, that we've actually got a dollar amount associated with it, so it actually, ideally, I mean, again, in my head, what we'd love is, you know, when you're driving south from the thruway, that you see this big beautiful building that says Masonic Medical Research Institute on it, as you drive into the city, we've been long called the hidden gem, and like, the hidden part kills me. Like, I want everyone to know who we are and what we do.
Well, I think across the world, I mean, across the world and across the country, you are well-known for the things that you do, and you might be a hidden gentleman inside the city of Utica, but I know your research is as well beyond just this, just this little city, you know, so it's amazing.
But I mean, the site, because of where it is, because of its location proximity to, I mean, SUNY Poly University, I mean, the hospital right there, I mean, it is, it is the ideal site for us to build.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eugene Bradley?
I'd like to be very brief.
Yeah, I just, common council has provided you a copy of section 3-244, public comment period. Please state your name.
First name is Eugene, last name Bradley. I was born here in the city of Utica, and reside here.
You have three minutes, Eugene.
Okay. The reason why I came up tonight, because I noticed that, this is based on observation, there is no hard copy for the people that goes out of their way to attend this meeting. When I entered that door, it should be on the table, the minutes, and what's your agenda tonight, so I can follow along with you. I don't know what's on the agenda, you know, are we supposed to go after the fact? I should have it while I'm in the meeting, so I can, you know what I'm saying? Participate in the discussion, because that's the whole purpose of it. And I have one other observation that I noticed, that now I'm starting to attend these meetings, last administration, Mayor Glimby, he was the president, you are now the president. I bring it to his attention about the agenda, are we supposed to have a hard copy?
It's posted at that line.
Yeah, but I'm saying, for those who goes out their way to come here on a Wednesday night, that would be accommodated. night, that would be accommodating. That's just common courtesy, so we don't know what you're talking about. We can feel like we're part of the discussion. Makes sense?
Sure. That's all you're going to do with this? Yeah.
Okay, but I'm saying for everyone that comes in, you want to be invited. Follow me? It's public. No, no, it's not a waste, because that way, if somebody call up, you could put it in the mail and send it out to them. Okay? So, my second concern was, it was just an observation. I thought we got a resolve last meeting about the back, you know, the back room.
No, we didn't.
They didn't vote on it?
No.
Okay, but I'm for open government, transparency. We need you out front. We elected you so we can hear, we can be part of the governmental process.
You're welcome back there.
But thank you. But no, we need it out front. No more back room smoke rules. We already did that. We already know how that works.
Thank you, Eugene.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stefan? Stefan? Stefan, Common Council has provided you a copy of section three dash two forty-four, public comment period. Are you in agreement with the rule?
Yes.
Please state your name.
Stefan Rubitsky.
You have three minutes. Thank you, Stefan.
Now, it is important in this cold weather and in the hot summer months that you all work with state leaders to help to fix the homeless problem in this city. It is a problem, and there needs to be more housing, and instead of letting these people sleep out on the streets or in the woods, no one in this cold, in this cold weather should be sleeping on the streets or in the woods. It is a problem, and this homeless and mental health situation needs to be fixed, and we need to work with state leaders to fix this. Thank you.
Thank you. Common Council, guest speaker, there's no communication from the mayor? No. Reported city officers, Marcus Phillips, Commissioner of Codes, Mark Sukalowski, Deputy Commissioner, Chief Gentile, Sergeant Carville, Brian Thomas, Urban Renewal, Stephanie DeGiorgio, Corporation Council. Marcus?
I have nothing to report from codes.
Mark?
Nope.
Chief?
Yeah, so, just kind of an update. Things are going well. We're working hard. One thing that we want to just make sure of is that all the council people, you know, make sure we're working through our council, and anytime council people have anything that they want to bring to the mayor's office, you know, we have a open policy, and we want to make sure that we're working on that. But, you know, we are still relying on you guys as your representative for each council district to be, really be the people that are having the most interface with your district and bringing those up to our office. So, that's something that we're just, that's important to us and that we really want you to focus on and, you know, go through the appropriate channels, and we'll get to work and do our best for you.
Thank you, Chief. Sergeant Carville?
Nothing to report.
Brian Thomas?
Each year, the city receives a little over four million dollars in federal entitlement funds through a variety, through three separate programs. Community Development Block Grant Funds, we generally receive about three-point-two million dollars. The Home Investment Partnership, which funds housing, we receive just about seven-hundred-thousand each year. And through the Emergency Solutions Grant, which funds activities for the homeless, to address homelessness, we receive about two-hundred thousand. We're starting, we're looking at starting a new program year, which HUD requires that we submit an annual action plan, telling HUD exactly how we plan to spend that four-plus million dollars. As a result of that, as part of that planning process, we'll hold two or three public meetings throughout the neighborhoods around the city. But in talking to the mayor, he would like, he asked me to invite each of you to weigh in and email both he and I your thoughts on priorities for that funding. So, in the next day or two, I will be putting together an email, just giving you a rundown, just a brief synopsis of some of the eligible activities under each of those three programs, and asking that you submit to us your thoughts on priority projects for that funding.
Thank you, Brian. Stephanie?
I have nothing to report, although I'd like to do something. Nevermind, sorry. Nothing, nothing to report.
Thank you. There are no miscellaneous communications? Cash report?
So, the cash report for December twenty twenty-three is thirty-six-point-one-eight-eight million received and filed.
Petitions, Reminds to the Senate Appeals, Council at Large, Council Member Jack LaMetcalf?
What was the question? Oh, you looked backwards this time.
Switch it up.
I was texting my son. He was telling me.
You're having a rough one today, aren't you, Dad? And I said, well, maybe, on that last legislation. Listen, that legislation I put on, that was just to protect the citizens of this city. I wasn't looking to take any power away from anybody, and I say I got a little, a lot of complaints on it from some people there, but my job is to protect the people, to protect the citizens of this city, and I will continue to do that. We'll put that in committee, and we'll discuss it a little more. But one thing I'd like to say is that the totality of this council is going to make our city run well. It's going to make this city hum. So, I'm glad we're all talking to each other. I'm glad we could all, you know, yell at each other, but at the end of the day, you know, we're all going to work towards the city. So, I don't have any problems if anybody doesn't like my legislation, but I appreciate the feedback I get. But I thank everybody for coming today, and I will continue working for the city, and stay warm out there, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Samantha Collis-Meltestas, at large?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I spoke enough earlier today. I've got nothing this evening, so, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember at large, Mr. Williamson?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to pass.
Joe Beatrice, Councilmember Beatrice?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing that I have is on, just reminder of a couple neighborhood meetings. This coming Monday, January twenty-second, I'll be with legislator Gentile at five-thirty at the, five-thirty to six-thirty at the North Utica Center, or just, you know, if anybody wants to come and talk to us. And our main meeting is at six-thirty. I believe the guest speaker is going to be Mark Wolberg, going over, you know, wills and different types, things for people to learn, okay? And then also, on February fifth, I am going to be joining the East Utica Meeting also, since I do have some districts in East Utica. And I'll let you know, Katie could probably tell you exactly where that's going to be, because I know she's part of it. I don't know, because the building they used to have, it is under construction, but that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Venice Irvin, fifth ward?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Thank the city for opening Johnson Park, two entry points that we have that go into Johnson Park, even though it's erect right now with the construction going. Somebody ran over one of the entry point, things that we had up, introducing them to Johnson Park, and those will replace. Thank the city for that. Also, I thank the police department. I was about to get into bed last weekend, there was a commotion outside, and it was actually in my driveway, and half the police force was out there, they must have known who I was, and they were taking care of somebody that had violated the law, and I stood out there and watching that, and they did find the gun on the individual. So, the thing that kind of threw me off was I couldn't tell who it was, and when they were getting ready to put him in the car, he said, hey, Mr., hey, Uncle Irvin, and I was like, oh. I was like, does he know me? And I kept asking my wife, does he know he's in my driveway getting in trouble? But he had actually ran into our driveway with a car, and thank God he missed both our cars, and just ran into a little bit of the side of the house on the side. So, just thank the police department for doing a good job. I think they acted appropriately. I didn't see him getting beat down, and at first, I wasn't going to come out the house because I thought they were looking for me. But just thank you for that, and thank you for doing a good job.
Thank you. Councilman Frank Carracote?
I'm awesome.
Fourth ward? Thank you. Councilman Joe Beattar, third ward?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. I want to thank everyone from the public for coming tonight, and as always, those watching on the live stream. I think we had good conversations during the committee of the whole meeting and good conversations during the caucus, and I think that's good, and we're going in the right direction with that. I do just want to mention the next South Utica Neighborhood Association meeting is scheduled for February twelfth at six P.M. on the second floor of the Parkway Recreation Center. And as always, too, I encourage anyone here or watching on the live stream to reach out to me if you think I could assist in any way or point you in the right direction with any questions you have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Robert Burmaster, second ward?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was riding the neighborhood the other day, and I saw we had that fire down on Sunset by Hertz Playground. The building's gone. I'm happier than happy. You know, there has been other fires in the city that the buildings stay three, four years, and nothing happens, and this one, fire gone, leveled, and I want to thank whoever was responsible for taking care of it. Thanks. But that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Katie Ayala, first ward?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I just want to touch on what Joe Beatrice said. Councilman Joe Beatrice, we have the East Utica Neighborhood Association meeting, February fifth, it's at six P.M. I believe we're still having it at Parrot and Twin Towers. Any updates on that, though? You can find on my website, katyforutica.com. And also on there, I put a list of, I love it a lot when the council members are doing radio interviews and whatever interviews we have, and it's just another place the conversations keep going. So, I'm archiving a list of all of them in one spot on my website also, so you can keep up with the conversations here, forced through the live stream or in the audience, or hear all the interviews in one spot elsewhere. But other than that, just another thank you to Masonic Research Lab, while I'm on the record, for this council meeting, and just saying, thank you for the tour, and it was a great facility, and I'm excited for the council to go see it themselves. And that is all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution one, marriage officers for city clerk and deputy clerk. Can I have a motion and a second? Thank you. Sponsored by Burmaster and Williamson, marriage officer, city clerk, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, be it resolved that pursuant to chapter forty-nine of laws of New York, the Common Council does hereby appoint the following persons as marriage officers for the period of January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Melissa Shortino, city clerk, Andrew Castillo, deputy city clerk. Be it further resolved that this resolution should take effect immediately. Can I have your votes?
Nineties adopted.
Resolution two. Can I have a motion and a second?
Yeah, I just, I'll make the motion, but I just want to clarify that Council President Giruzzi has been a marriage officer since the beginning of the term, because that is part of the charter when you're elected official.
Duly noted.
If you married somebody in the past sixteen days, it would have been official.
Thank you. Thank you. Marriage officers, Common Council, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, be it resolved that pursuant to chapter forty-nine of laws of New York, the Common Council does hereby appoint the following persons as marriage officers for the period of January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Can I have your votes, please?
Nineties adopted.
Can I have a motion to place on resolution three in committee?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to propose ordinance, a resolution number three, appropriation of spending for the twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-three, paving year into committee.
Thank you.
Resolution four, calling for a public hearing on URA property. Can I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Do you want a motion to amend?
Yes.
You got to pull out a command, make to make a motion to amend. Actually, Councilman Beattar can make the motion, since it was his.
I apologize, Mr. President. Make a motion to amend the final whereas clause, the proposed sale in the Observer Dispatch to read the proposed sale in the Daily Sentinel.
I'll second his motion.
Can I have a second, please? Can I have your vote?
Nineties for amendment.
Resu, ordinance five? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Ordinance approving the designation of Masonic Medical Research Institute as an eligible and qualified project sponsored pursuant to article fifteen of the general municipal law for the purpose of the sale of three eighteen-point-eight-one-four-one.
I'll make a motion and put it in committee.
Ordinance six, amended section two dash two one oh four capital, reserve fund, motion and a second. We're going to place it in committee?
Yes.
I'll move that. Second.
An ordinance amending section two dash two one oh four of Utica City Code by adding a paragraph. Resolution seven, translating council minutes. Can I have a motion and a second?
I'll move that.
Adding Common Council minutes to the city of Utica's website to be translated, whereas the city of Utica is one rich in cultural diversity, welcoming those from all corners of the globe. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Common Council for the city of Utica does hereby authorize and direct the written minutes of a health council meeting to be posted on the city of Utica website for translation. Votes, please?
Sure, I think we should all want it to be translated on the city website.
Nineties adopted.
Ordinance eight, an ordinance enacted in a moratorium on marijuana dispensers in the city of Utica.
I'll make a motion to pull from committee.
I know.
This is still on the agenda.
This is not in committee, so we're just.
No, that was the.
Then you got to make a motion to waive the Thursday rule on this piece, correct?
Well, no, because it's coming from law, so it doesn't need a Thursday rule.
Oh, okay. It was confusing when it got sent to us earlier, because it wasn't by the majority minority leader.
This is for the marijuana dispensaries.
Yes. Well, no, it's going to be, it's going to be today, because it's effective today. So, we, you can, so you can, I would add the commencing today, if you pass it today, and then you can put the conclusion date ending six months from then.
Six months, I think it's fine the way it is, and we know that it expires six months from the first meeting in July. Because it says six months.
But I need, we need a start date, so that's why you have to put the date that you.
Yeah, which is today.
Yep.
January seventeenth.
Yep.
Should we make it at twelve oh one, twelve oh one A.M.? There's a leap year. Yeah, I mean, we really should consider it.
Can I have a vote?
Nineties adopted.
Does the chair have a motion and a second to remove any piece from committee?
Yep, I'll make a motion and a second to pull out the zoo, the zoo contract.
I'll second.
And Stephanie?
It's going to be a resolution number four in your committee package?
Sure, just for, because we did amend the contract several times since it's been in committee, so I want to make sure, because the original date was twelve six, that this is the new, this is the. is the new, this is the final amended?
I don't know if this is the final contract, but I know the request that you initially made absent the, um, change of the term were made.
Was amended, that's why I, but it was...
But I don't know if the contract that you're actually looking at is the correct one, but the amendments...
It's in, it's in Section twenty-three, it's on the last page, the effective date is...
No, what I'm talking about is that we amended a couple pieces, and if you look at the top, it says that it was introduced on twelve six, so I just wanna make sure that the amendments that were made, this was introduced as a new piece, so it probably should be the last time that it was sent down to the council.
Yeah, the, the resolution, the resolution is the same, but I know that the requests you made were, to the contract, were made.
Okay.
But I don't know if you have the...
So just wanna make sure that the, that the, that the resolution that's passed is, is this, is based on the contract that was last amended, so just pa, pass the resolution with the contingency that the, that the contract follows the last amended component.
The, the resolution actually provides substantially as attached, so based on your comments, it doesn't, if we have to make a grammatical error, substantially as you...
Okay, just wanted to clarify that, okay, then that works, okay.
Can I have a second? A resolution approving agreement to operate and manage the Utica Zoo, whereas the Utica Zoological Society has successfully operated and managed the Utica Zoo for a number of years, and whereas this arrangement, although to the mutual benefit of both parties and the people of Utica and surrounding area, has not been formalized into a written agreement, whereas the administration and the zoolog, uh, society has negotiated a written agreement to formalize and continue the operation of Utica Zoo. Further result, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute any documents necessary to implement this resolution. Can I have your votes?
Nineties adopted.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn. You want a second?
A second?